So am I counting? I think we've got six, right? So math is always strong. So I will, it is six oh four. We are zoomed tonight because of the weather. We do have folks in the administration building there to hang out there. I'm downtown, but I'm up above flood stage here. I hope, you know, it's best to drive when nobody else is driving, so we'll drive a little later. But we appreciate everybody staying home, not coming down to the hills or because that's problematic for some streets. So we're, we're gonna go ahead, we are. We are in session and this is a public meeting. This day, it's October 26th. But we will go into exec session shortly and and Chris, Sean, we just need a motion to do that and we can hop to the other room. Curriculum is finishing up and we should be able to see everybody in exec session.
I move that. I move that we enter into executive session to discuss school district business matters of specific individuals employment contract negotiations. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris, thanks Maura and Tricia, I'm sure you're out there and we'll just go ahead and call a roll and we'll go into it.
Rob Ainsley. Erin Croyle. Kelly Evans. Sean Eversley Bradwell. Eldred Harris.
Yes.
Nicole LaFave.
Yes.
Moira Lang.
Yes.
Chris Malcolm.
Yes.
I don't see Patricia on there.
Yeah, she is there.
Wow.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't get my video to work, but I'm supposed to be heard, so yes. Okay, thank you.
We got your pad and now we have to hop and do this all over again to go into exec session. But we'll, we'll do that, we'll say everybody in there. So and then we'll be back for our public meeting. Thanks, everyone. Well, we are back, we are in open session, I believe, right? And are we? Tricia, are we good? Are we? We are recording again?
We are, we are good, Rob.
Thank you, Tricia. And so we are back and so we'll, we'll go ahead and get started. We are back from exec session. With this is a hundred percent zoom meeting today because of travel advisory and some folks are in town and others are doing the smart thing and are staying home. Where it's totally dry and the basement is not flooding. But there is that happening throughout the district. Depending on where you live. But so let's, let's go to any modifications to the agenda that I am unaware of. I think we're okay, Sean. I think. Right, so we're all good. So if so, then it's onto public comment and so I, Tricia, I'm not sure that I heard that anyone had signed up ahead of time or if anyone is with us now, there may be a raised hand up there, so.
So I haven't received any emails for public comment, but we, we will check the chat and participants.
Appreciate it, Tricia, what gives, give it a minute and then we can see if we have any students with us. We are a bit early back from exec session that is not seven o'clock yet, but in an effort to get everyone home who's not home, you know, we won't actually, you know, all those were fairly loquacious in, in its accession, you know, it's opportunity to interact and talk and if we ran out of things to talk about. Is that a SAT word too, Sean? Is that along with alacrity?
Best of the words that you're using, Rob, that is fantastic. What we can tell folks, if our board reps are not ready or public comment, we can always come back to it at the end of the meeting or somewhere else in the meeting as well. So people still have an opportunity, but we can keep the agenda moving, Rob, until that time.
Absolutely, always flexible and I try to use big words from Moira's sake. Because just trying to say, yeah, football players can learn words if you go to class once in a while. But anyway, how about we just move on to the consent agenda? That's always something we can get out of the way. And there are some interesting items there and and typically, this is where Chris and Amanda weigh in on anything that needs to be spoken to.
Well, I should probably move it first, correct?
That would be great.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's like my pad, any, any questions regarding the items there?
I'll just make a comment to thank all of the district employees and retirees who have signed on to come and help us with district wide COVID testing. Support is much appreciated.
To that point, Pat, I did, it is on the personnel report for those that were wondering what we're talking about. But it was a list of, list of all stars there. List of, you know, thank you to, I shouldn't just highlight one, but a list of some of our outstanding administrators and other, other personnel that are stepping up. And we appreciate that. It's going to help the kids, obviously help the district, help the community, just be able to test and monitor as we go forward. So if I'm not hearing any other questions, Tricia, let's.
My apologies, Rob, as part of the consent, also want to thank the Park Foundation for helping to fund the Farm to Food Program. It's an amazing program that helps our students. Continued thanks to IPEI, who continues to be an amazing partner for the Ithaca City School District. Helping to fund a number of initiatives, so thank you for that. And for folks in the community who are listening, significant recommendation to attend our finance committee meetings in which you will hear much more about what takes place in much more depth. So thank you to our finance committee and thank you to our partners and community organizations, greatly appreciated.
Sean, I'd also like to add that last year, we added to all of the numbered agenda items descriptors, so if someone can't make a meeting, but also unfortunately due to COVID, all of our meetings are also recorded, so you can get the full understanding as we go through the details.
Well said, well said, Sean and Chris, anyone else? And appreciate the comments.
Oh, could I just make a note of item six on the consent agenda, which is a donation of $2,000 to our Ithaca High School Latin program in recognition of the excellence of that program. I'm very well familiar with this and with the, the excellence of the teaching and what has done for a number of our students and it may not be the biggest program in the state or the country, but it ranks among the very, very top because of the excellence of our faculty, so thank you.
Pat, what's interesting, Rob made a note to point that out during finance and you know, really was by student demand that drove that as well, so it's, it's encouraging that you shared that.
It's, it's, it's one of those really exceptional jewels that we just happen to have in Ithaca because of the people we have who want to teach it and want to learn it. And it's one of those many, many thing qualities that, that makes it a pleasure to be a part of the school board and to move that work forward. Thank you, Chris.
And I'll only add to that, that as an example, this is a way that folks can use IPEI as a conduit to use to make gifts directly to a certain program. You know, that is, it is dedicated, is not going to general fund and then somehow parceled out. It is a gift through IPEI and using that again, IPEI is a nonprofit venue to make a gift to the district. And so again, that great partnership with IPEI that we appreciate on so many levels. And we've killed almost enough time to make it to seven o'clock, but perhaps we can go ahead and anything else and we'll go ahead and vote on this, it's been moved to second. Not hear anything? Let's.
I'll just add that we.
There we go, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll just add that we had a really, really great finance committee meeting, our last go around. I've learned a tremendous amount about how our retiree insurance plan works and when insurance companies are acting as physicians, we had great participation from one of Rob's old teachers, well, the spouse of one of Rob's old teachers. So that was, it's all great to see community come around more was incredibly insightful as always. Having gone through or currently in the system, so I just think that was, that was one of the best meetings I can remember in a long time. Thanks, Chris, you're a great leader.
Well, thank you, E. I can't take any credit, it's definitely our team with, led by Amanda and all the other folks.
Well, if we're done with all the compliments, which are well deserved, but Tricia, I think we can go ahead and do the, perform the consent agenda and then we can kind of hop, hop back to some of our other items.
Rob Ainsley.
Yes.
Kelly Evans.
Yes.
Sean Eversley Bradwell. Eldred Harris.
Yes.
Nicole LaFave.
Yes.
Moira Lang.
Yes.
Chris Malcolm.
Yes.
Patricia Wazalu.
Yes.
Thanks, everyone, a consent agenda has passed. I'm just gonna hop back up. Tricia, do we have any public comments that you're aware of at this point?
Checking right now, let's see. No comments, Rob.
Thanks, Tricia. I do see that Andrew and Zara are LACS board reps are on my screen and I assume at LACS perhaps. And it'd be great, great opportunity, we've heard from IHS quite a bit over the last year or so. And be great to hear from you two and, and this is an opportunity for you to introduce yourselves and and tell us anything that you, well, share with anything with us that you would want to share, so please do.
Hi, we're Andrew and Zara, I'm Andrew McCracken, I'm a senior at LACS.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm a freshman at LACS.
And I mean, we're the ICS board reps. So do you want us to just like get right into it with our, our stuff? Awesome. Well, so we have, we have two major things that we like to report back on. The first being that we have over this, the course of this specific school year, we have had some, some very alarming and very unusual cases of significant transphobia and vandalism in bathrooms of the school. So last year, we, we, as a, as a student and staff body, we decided to put tampon and pad dispensers in all of the bathrooms, not just the women's room as it had been. So that was a, that was something that passed with the majority, you know, a very strong majority of the, of the students and staff. So we enacted that this year. So this year, there had been fully stocked, you know, tampon pad dispensers in all of that in the school, which has been very good. Um, one issue we've had is a lot of the newer sixth graders have have not really understood why this isn't, we've had cases of severe vandalism, actually. In a notable case, one of the tampon dispensers was like physically ripped off the wall from the men's room, which was really quite alarming and there've been other cases of harassment and transphobia and vandalism stuff in the bathroom. So two weeks ago on Wednesday, it would be three weeks ago tomorrow, actually. Three, two, two weeks ago tomorrow. We brought this issue to the whole school and so we discussed transphobia and harassment and why the tampon dispensers were there in the first place. And the meeting, which was originally meant to go for just one period, was extended to be two periods long by, by, you know, a popular demand from the students. So it was a very, I think it was a very productive meeting where we talked a lot, a lot of, you know, frustrations were aired and it was a very powerful meeting where a lot of students, you know, a lot of transgender students, a lot of, you know, cisgender allies of students, you know, just gendered students in general, really, you know, said why this hurt them and why this was not okay. And so we've had two main follow-ups, that being with our GSMA committee. So it's gender and sexual minorities and allies. They have been working on preparing some information and resources for family groups to present to their students during sixth period on either Monday or Friday at some point, and so that's going to be coming soon, hopefully. And then the other, the other piece of follow-up was that these specific cases of harassment and transphobia were, are being brought to our kind of, our, our student conflict resolution group, ACC, so Alternative Community Court. And those cases are being processed and handled, you know, during sixth period on Wednesdays and on Thursdays. So that is something that's moving along, so there are some follow-ups that are happening.
Yeah, and our, as a student body, many students have called upon making more of the bathrooms gender neutral, so it doesn't feel like there's one space for students to use the restroom and that's becoming unsafe. It's becoming more that there would be two gendered, not gender neutral, but like gendered bathrooms and then the rest be turned gender neutral. Students are making a major call upon this, so more of the bathrooms will be seen as fair and equal, not that there's just one space for students to vandalize. It's more of a spread out situation of where more students can actually feel safe in bathrooms, which is a number one concern for a school.
Yeah, as it had been in previous years, there were, there were three men's rooms, two women's rooms and one gender neutral bathroom. This year, due to a 504 plan, the one gender neutral bathroom, which is a one stall bathroom, it was made into a private restroom for a specific student with a 504. One of the downstairs women's rooms was made into a gender neutral bathroom. So it was, you know, one gender neutral bathroom, one women's room and then three men's rooms, which was not really, I mean, it's not a very, that's not balanced. I mean, it already was unbalanced and it's kind of unbalanced more. And so from this, there has, as long as I've been at LACS, you know, full seven year run, people have really been pushing and calling for making all the bathrooms in the school or most or all the bathrooms, it kind of depends on the view, ask, completely gender neutral, which is something that we have not done yet, as I understand it, because of state guidelines. And that's something that students really, really wants to happen. In our capital campaign, in our capital campaign for the summer of 2022, there is going to be renovations to the upstairs bathrooms to make them gender neutral, which will be very good and something that is, you know, long overdue. But anything that, you know, could make all of the bathrooms in the school gender neutral would be something that, yeah, gender, yeah, gender neutral and safe. More importantly, safe.
Yes.
That would be something that would be very, you know, that's something that there's a lot of, of desire for and a lot of push for, in this.
Absolutely, and staff, this is a staff, student staff body issue that we both definitely want to address.
You want to do proposals?
Sure. And then our second, our most recent ASM was discussing a proposal by a student to change our guidelines for graduation, the GVE.
Yeah, so, so, so we have, you know, so as you may know, you know, we don't have grades, we have narrative evaluations. Yes, and so, you know, GVE, PVE, we instead of, you know, instead of getting a GPA at the end of your four-year run, you get, you have to do a promotion by exhibition to get out of eighth grade into high school and then a graduation by exhibition, so that's just kind of looking through. It's, it's a kind of holistic thing with all of your, all of your evaluations and a kind of culminating project or multiple culminating projects if you're a senior. And so it's, it's kind of showing off that you are ready to go off into the world instead of just having a number say that.
Yeah, and this proposal talked about adding a requirement to do eco-action in having a part of school, either doing public art or a science project, which is probably going to be a common take. Doing that before you graduate and this was passed by staff and students to now have, a part of our requirements is to do one act of climate justice before you graduate or promote. And this was a proposal that was actually very positive by students and has taken a lot of motivation and inspiration for students to now help clean up downtown and do more public art regarding climate justice and it's made a, already a quite a spark in eco-action and this will only continue forward with 300 students every year doing good for the environment, it's really quite a excellent thing for a school to be a part of.
Yeah, so that, so moving forward, that's going to be part of our, you know, science requirements to, to, to promote or graduate. So it's, it has, it passed the student body, it passed the staff body. Because, so because it is a graduation requirement, it has to go through students and staff, so it went through both and it passed both. It's now going to the science department and it's kind of, and it's very much in their hands to do what they want with it. There's a lot of, I spoke with some of the scientists, there's a lot of very interesting and exciting ideas about that, so we'll, we can keep you all updated on, on what that turns out to be.
This will most likely start taking place next year. This year is really just finalizing that idea and making permanent action for it. I think that is it for LACS.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, that's what we've been up to in, in ASMs, in all school meetings lately, so that's, that's our bit.
So it's great to, great to meet and see and hear from you today and there will be board responses shortly. You give a report and that, well, from we hear from all students and the board has a chance to respond to anything that are asked questions. And indeed, as we go through the meeting, as you join the meeting, you're a part of this meeting, you're sitting at, well, tonight, it's a virtual table in the boardroom, but you know, feel free to, you know, raise a hand and join in the discussion of any items that we go through on the district in our agenda and work sessions are open to you as well, right? So it's not just coming and doing a report a couple of times a month. It can be for you, but it doesn't have to be. Certainly look forward to you, to you to be as involved as you wish to be. I do see Grace from Ithaca High, I believe, is on, on the screen here. If she wants to give an update at the guy and then we can have board responses. Or anyone else remember the guy that I don't see.
Hi, thanks for having the board meeting online. Sporting events at IHS are back in full spring after being initially delayed. The IHS football team delivered a roaring victory at our homecoming game last Friday. The collage concert is also happening tomorrow, though it's unfortunately not open to the general public because of COVID policies, attendance is student only, but it will be recorded, so be sure to wash that club. So be sure to wash that, club events are also going smoothly with the Mali UN Club, helmed by autonomy, preparing for its annual statewide conference competition in Rochester. In addition to existing clubs, the culture at IHS has continued to foster new extracurricular activities. Just last Tuesday, the Asian American and Allies Club, which Grace is the president of, met for the first time to learn and raise awareness about anti-race, anti-Asian racism, filling a much needed hole in IHS's collage of extracurriculars. And while singular clubs are meeting, many of the extracurriculars at IHS work in unison and partnership. Just to give an example of this, the International Club, whose advisor is Ms. Bergman, is hoping to, is hoping to provide the lunch for Brain Team's competition on November 20th.
I would like to talk about the COVID testing program. We thought that the COVID testing would start last week at IHS, but this never happened. We are wondering where IHS is with this and when we can expect testing to start. We have also heard other schools have started weekly testing and we were wondering how this was going. Another question we have is if more students have signed up for this weekly testing. Again, this would be beneficial to students who are feeling sick but aren't sure if it would be safe to attend class. We've heard from many students that they have missed like multiple days of school because they didn't have the necessary testing to confirm their like illness.
And then lastly, at the high school, many students are a part of and take pride in not only athletic teams, but also in extracurricular clubs, whether they be academic, cultural or recreational. Other student rep is that, the other student reps and I have noticed that it seems athletics receive greater funding and support from the wider ICSD community in comparison to many clubs, just like our sports teams. Just like how our sports teams have the resources to compete at the highest level, our club should as well. Many clubs take part in competitions across New York State and even across the country. An example, this is Brain Team, they have competitions as far as Ohio. Due to the larger expenses associated with these trips and a lack of adequate fundraising, due to there being like no club booster program like there is with athletics, many clubs have to ask their members to pay individual fees in order, in order to attend. This in turn makes clubs less equitable for the entire student body. Additionally, clubs that don't necessarily attend competitions should still be able to organize events and trips without the burden of cost. We recognize that clubs can often receive funding from the student council, but it is not, is usually not enough to cover the entire cost of events or competitions. We would like to know the current process through which, from ICSD through which clubs receive funding and how it could possibly be changed to be a system that is more equitable between both clubs and athletics. Thank you.
Thanks, I think, thanks, LACS. The guy, I think that's everyone, right? And so thanks. Yes, absolutely, congratulations to the football team for winning on Friday night at homecoming, that's, that's great. Obviously, all the other events, athletic and, and, and arts, et cetera, are, it's great when, for all those means and participation as well. Open it up to board comments and some I'm sure are coming, so feel free to weigh in.
I'll, I'll start by acknowledging that I've heard great things about the, the coaching staff for the ICSD football team and if I've heard it, it must really be out there. And there are, just for the IHS on, on equitability, there are a lot of funding sources, there are different stipend schedules for the advisors and coaches to different clubs, which are actually a union negotiated issue. So that is something that cannot be changed unilaterally by the board. But I welcome your interest in this topic and many of our clubs such as Brain Team and Code Red Robotics, which my daughter was part of, have actually competed on a national level and been funded to travel way much further than any athletic team in this district ever has, so it's with a lot of community support, meaning tens of thousands of dollars of community support that, that ordinarily funnels through IPEI. So another great shout out to IPEI. That's not a systematic answer, that's a very, that's a granular answer. But it's just something now, I do have a question for the LACS members on this question of transphobia and vandalism in bathrooms and you seem to, correct me if I'm wrong, be directing responsibility towards some of the younger members of LACS. And I, I'm very curious whether this is a specific issue to LACS and transphobia or whether it is a broader issue that was connected with this, the whole devious licks thing that was going on in social media at the beginning of the semester and also negatively affected our other middle schools and especially the bathrooms there. I mean, this is, I'm, I'm just wondering whether it's really focused on LACS or whether this is part of a, a larger issue that, that we're seeing a very negative issue in its own way and in a lot of ways and whether you've had, have any thoughts on that?
Absolutely, this issue isn't our alternative court, especially issues like these, these are definitely taken on mainly by upperclassmen of the high school. A lot of the younger students overseas. A lot of the younger students oversee these issues to help learn and grow from them, but they're definitely not handled by like, these are very serious cases that are also being dealt with by staff. Definitely a combination of the two to come up with a viable and like concrete solution. So this issue doesn't continue in our school. So no, younger students are not being like, this is not in their hands. This is definitely an upperclassman and staff issue.
So I I would say the so we did say that it was it was largely, you know, kind of younger students and sixth graders. One of the reasons why we said this is, I mean, we have, we have, you know, some evidence and proof of who did it on on some cases, and it is largely, you know, younger students. It's also LACS, we consider ourselves by far to be a kind of a a a not a haven so much, but just like a very, very safe space for all, you know, kinds of LGBTQ identities, you know, period, no matter what. This kind of an issue of people being extremely openly transphobic in our school, in our community, is completely unprecedented and completely unheard of at our school. And the only common denominator that I can find with it and that we can all find is the newer students. So I would say I think it's partially that. One observation, I mean, a lot of these students haven't been in school since they were in fourth grade, you know? They haven't been in school since fourth grade and they, you know, and I don't want to, you know, be like, oh, social media is the root of all evil. But they're learning a lot of these things and they're, you know, they don't have the social emotional learning. They don't have the development to really understand them and understand why they're they're bad. So I would actually say I am, I'm very worried that this that this actually happens at other middle schools where they don't have as much kind of LGBT protection and this kind of stuff just happens. And and I would say my heart aches for the, you know, transgender seventh grader at Boynton, who has to deal with all of this awful, awful stuff on a daily basis. And they do not have a supporting and loving community to kind of fall back on. They don't have, you know, we have this, we had this big meeting and it was a very, you know, it was very like kind of bearing of hearts and people were were really, there were strong emotions there. But it also showed that our community cares about this and this is not something that we're going to just let slide. And I've I fear, I worry that that's the kind of impression that maybe other schools who don't have the resources or the climb or the organization to dedicate to this kind of an issue and approaching it in a very, you know, caring kind of student focused way. I worry that that might them the 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 impression that that might be sending is that it's not something they care about. So, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just going to say to clarify, I'm not talking about any kind of transphobic behavior at the other middle schools. I'm talking about a more generic bathroom vandalism. And the our our teachers and community at the middle schools do equally care about these issues. So but 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 we don't have that kind of specific targeted vandalism. But we do have vandalism, which was something that was called for naturally on social media, which we all love, of course.
Yeah, um, I like to speak to that. Uh, there is not, LACS does not have an issue with vandalism in bathrooms. It never really has. These issues are very basically exclusively trans like transphobic issues.
At LACS.
At LACS at least. It's like a lot of it is with menstrual products pretty much exclusively. It's where the vandalism is coming from. Otherwise, there's like barely like there's no, like it's very actually a really nice bathrooms. Like they're clean, like students don't have the urge to.
People aren't, you know, stealing soap dispensers and stuff. It's not.
We haven't had that issue whatsoever. Um, this isn't a call from social media. I think I think this is just direct.
This is, yeah. So I would say, uh, no, I don't think it is that, you know, that devious licks trend or whatever. I would say that it's probably in this case, you know, the the case of vandalism that we have had almost entirely have been very direct transphobia. So that's, that's a very, that was something that was very worrying to us. And so that was kind of why we came down like that.
Andrew and Zara, is that how you pronounce it? Great to meet you both. Welcome. Looking forward to continued conversations. Andrew, I need a T-shirt. I'll be talking to your principal. I definitely need more of the ox in my my wear. And I'd be interested in both of your perspective, not for this evening, but to talk to student populations. And my job as a faculty member for prospective teachers, we've had a lot of conversations about bathrooms and particularly whether we use the phrase gender neutral. Is it reminiscent of colorblind or do we use gender inclusive or all gender or simply name them bathrooms? And so I'd be intrigued to see how we have those conversations about what is the most affirming for our students. And so again, not a conversation for this evening and maybe we'll try to find a way to connect some time outside of this. But thank you. Welcome and appreciate the perspective and the work that you're doing. For our IHS reps, great questions about organizations and funding. I'm intrigued by this. Part of it is dictated by the New York State Public School Athletics Association of what we must do. But it doesn't mean it doesn't equate to something being unequal. And so I'll be intrigued about what happens and what looks there. And Grace, I know I've said this before, but I continue to be appreciative of your work and your activism. My dissertation talks about this idea of time loops, how time folds back on itself, specifically in the Ithaca City School District. And what I'm hearing from you in particular is the same conversations that our Black and Latino students were saying thirty years ago and that there was no representation and no acknowledgement and no inclusion in the curriculum. And so it's both jarring in some regards, right, to that we're having the same conversation. But also heartening and warming to know that we have people that are there that are saying enough is enough. You will see me. You will hear me. You will include me in whatever ways as a board that we can support that work. Please reach out to us and we'll make that happen. So so thank you. We'll come back, I think, as a board to have a conversation next board meeting about funding and how we make that happen. I don't want to answer this evening without us having information. And so I'll ask my fellow board members to hold off on that until we get some actual details and we can provide you with a more informative response, if that makes sense. But but thank you to our student reps. Greatly appreciate y'all.
Hey, student reps.
Oh, ju- just to grace, part of the consent agenda tonight was approving funding for retired faculty and administrators to be onsite administrators for COVID testing throughout the district. So we we are moving forward on that.
Well, thanks, Pat. That's what I was going to add. In addition to saying hello, Grace, I agree with everything Sean said about you. Keep coming for us. Andrew and Zara, nice to meet you all. I don't think I've spoken to either one of you before. I have a very specific question because I'm just trying to be clear. It sounds like you're saying a vandalism that has taken place in LACS is directed exclusively at the feminine products that were placed in all the bathrooms. Is that a fair assumption of what you were saying?
So, yeah, in the in the bathroom issue, the most few stations, yeah, it's it's almost all been just excuse me, exclusively directed at the, you know, tampon and pad dispensers. I mean, and and there was, you know, there was the case I talked about, you know, physically ripping it off the wall, but also just, you know, taking them out and throwing them around.
All right. So my follow up question is, there clearly was a decision to put those products into all the bathrooms. And I'm wondering how that decision was communicated and discussed with all of the students at LACS, including the little guys in elementary, since they seem to be the ones who are having the most difficulty with the with this change. Were they involved in this conversation about moving in that direction?
No, students that are now here in sixth grade are not including discussion. But the students last year, there was a online ASM with the entire school or split into groups with the school. We had multiple conversations about menstrual products and transphobia and why this issue is so important for trans students that need menstrual products. And when it was voted upon by the students, it passed with a ninety seven percent of students. I think it was. Yeah, ninety seven percent of students fully backed this idea and agreed and the staff also agreed that this was necessary. This is a large shock to us because our community is very accepting, obviously, and also agrees that this is something that we need. I mean, ninety seven percent of students, that is an insane number to have. And so it isn't, this is a surprise because are there's such a large majority.
Yeah, so I I hear what you're saying and you are, you're you're kind of right on the money there because the trick is that the students who are who who we believe are mostly behind doing this, the the sixth graders, the really young ones. They, I mean, they were not at LACS and we had this discussion. So one of the main things we focused on at the ASM where we kind of discussed this whole thing two weeks ago was was why they are there so that we could kind of explain that. And I think that was pretty, it's a good.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'd like to make a few comments and ask some questions. First of all, Andrew and Sarah, I'm welcome and I'm really glad you're here. Just a little bright spot on this issue that I'm the liaison for Bell Sherman and I was there recently. And the principal was telling me how, under the initiative of the fifth graders there, those kids wanted to churn the bathrooms on their floor into gender neutral or just just bathrooms. And apparently with great glee, they they finally took down the signs that said boys and girls from those bathrooms. I'm a little bit fuzzy about how the details of how it's working. But I believe some of those fifth graders are going to come and make a brief presentation or just share with us what they did and why they did it. So and you might even want to contact the the principal to get Jeff Tomasic to get some details about that. I certainly found that very, very encouraging. And these are kids who had been, you know, a lot of them out of school since they were in third grade. Yet this is something they were doing in September under their own initiative. So one thing for LACS is that I I'm aware that I'm sure much to everybody's disappointment that for the second year in a row, you weren't able to have your traditional fall retreat. And I know you did something because I live across the street and I heard loud music in the middle of the afternoon and went out and saw my daughter and some of her fellow teachers walking around. I said, what's going on? They said, it's fall retreat. So I'd be interested to know, you know, more details about what that was like. And then it makes me wonder, you know, what are your discussions around trip planning? I assume you're all hoping that come May, trips could happen. But, you know, how are you discussing that?
So I'm glad you asked. We did have Fall Street. It was it was very exciting. It was very entertaining. And it was so, you know, usually we have gone to the Brookendale Nazarene Retreat Camp. But over COVID nineteen, that camp just fully went out of business and shut down. And there's, you know, there, you know, district COVID policy, we couldn't have gone out of the building anyways. So I think most of us consider ourselves lucky that we got anything at all. Even if it was very disappointing compared to previous years, it was still something. So we we had that. It was pretty fun. And so.
Yeah, we had also different projects and people were able to write and do all, you know, LACS types of things. We did end up on the first night, we wound up having a talent show that was a renowned success and open mic. It was, it was in the later part of the event, but that had a large group of students and people were really excited to see the talent. But for trips, some of it's still very fuzzy on what will actually happen. We're hoping for to be able to do field trips again. Students want to be able to, you know, have biking trip and do the museum trips and all those types of things. So we're hoping there'll be a success. People are starting to think about what the possibilities of that, if we do have to stay doing it online, bringing people in or, you know, this meeting here, we'll see if field trips get approved again.
Yeah, we the kind of the 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 current plan is that we're going to try to do it as as normally as possible. And that does involve, you know, trips that, you know, leave and go canoeing for a whole week. So they leave, you know, ten AM Monday and they come back three PM Friday. So we're really, you know, we're really hoping and like praying that we can get that approval to do a trip like that. But we also have backup plans and backup experience from what we did for trips last year. So we have, we have redundancies, but we're hoping to to do, you know, some things that are at least as normal as possible.
Absolutely. Thanks.
And if we're going to move on here shortly, but Lily, if you could just give a quick update regarding testing for not only Grace, but for the community. And then we'll move on if we could.
That's good. Excellent. Yeah, so we have begun a relatively slow rollout, I would say, of screening testing. So once we received the materials, we quickly developed a schedule to go through all twelve schools over the next twelve days, right? So we have this team of folks that are working with a new system and we're working with a new company. And there are, as I said, as I've said before, there are going to be significant growing pains and there there certainly are, although I will say each day gets easier and easier. And I'm really, really impressed and really grateful for the team and especially Carrie Burke and our wonderful nurses who have provided some guidance, but are also doing their full time jobs. So but they've certainly been great. So each school has a specific date that they're starting. And Ithaca High School's date is on November third. And all of the administrative teams are communicating out with students and staff and families about when those dates are starting. And then we, as I mentioned before, will have a traditional schedule that's weekly for every for every school. Moving forward from there, but there are quite a number of logistics that we have to work out at each school, which is why we're taking this slower approach. And we have a number of posters that, you know, we're trying to put up in buildings. So kids know what what it is as well. And Grace has graciously offered, help me hang those up. Thanks, Grace. We've sent some emails and are happy to send more to students and to to families as well. And I think that's about it.
Thank you, Lily. And
Quick question.
Any other board members have anything before we let Dr. Brown talk?
Beak, I know that we had originally talked about having the fifth graders at a board meeting. Can we let folks know when we may try to have this conversation about bathrooms in ICSD?
This is amazing, Dr. Everstee Bradwell. Right as Moira was talking, I was letting Dr. Brown know that we do have, we actually have confirmed maybe last week even that that the fifth graders will be here for our first meeting in December. So they'll kick off our our first meeting in December as we engage in discussions around all gender and inclusive bathrooms.
All right, very good. And seemingly, whenever we discuss facilities and facilities, it's always about bathrooms. And it seems to be, that's building them and building new ones and renovating. And now it's it's it always comes down to bathrooms, Dr. Brown. And but let's let you talk about a few other things right now. That'll be great.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity, Ms. Dangley. It's good to see everyone. And a special thank you and welcome to Andrew and Zara. Your energy and excitement for this opportunity has been palpable when I've seen you in the buildings and that's shown tonight, too. So we're getting, we're looking forward to getting to know you, learning with you and working with you on so many things. So thank you for being here. And, you know, the second thing I wish to talk about, just to Um, and you know, the, the second thing I wish to talk about, uh, just to highlight for the board and the community in. Board docs under superintendent's update or business item, please click. There's a document there that uh, I've shared. Um, and I will not read it for everyone tonight, one, because I don't want to read to folks, but uh, most importantly, I was, this document will be. What we used to develop our next ICSD Insider. Uh, the Insider will be returning and we're gonna use our ICSD Insider document and newsletter. To update the community on where we are with learning forward ICSD. Um, you'll hear some updates this evening. Um, in the document, you'll see uh, what we're thinking about. Um, as I remind folks, we talked about this learning forward ICSD. Um, initiative and approach and commitment. Um, and we said all along it would be a three-year commitment. Um, and you know, we think it'll take us three years to really see some significant progress, some of these things. And I remind folks, it's gonna take some time. We, we're trying to change culture, change our curriculum, change our offerings um. Through these four broad categories, uh, students as partners and leaders, anti-racist curriculum for all, educated identity work and structures of support. Um, so I, I, I love that folks are paying attention and I appreciate your patience and flexibility as we work through these things. And again, we're gonna constantly update our board and the community on where we are. Um, for example, students with partner, as partners and leaders, you've heard from young people tonight. Um, Ms. Talk is met with quite a few young people as we've been working on this issue around uh, bathrooms. Um, gender neutral bathrooms, just bathrooms. I love the conversation we're having right now and the fact that we're having this conversation. With our young people. Our young people have been a part of our new teacher or educator orientation processes. They're part of our uh, mental health curriculum, mental health committees at individual schools. So we're continuing to enhance our partnerships with young people. The anti-racism, anti-racist curriculum for all, anti-marginalization curriculum. It's fascinating. We've come a long way. We have about a third of our educators who've been a part of writing and implementing an anti-marginalization case study. We've had um, over eighty educators who are part of the summer professional development work when we've worked on uh, these units there as well. So a lot of work in, including some work that's happening with grading at our secondary schools right now that's pretty exciting. Um, the identity work, uh, my goal, my vision is to have educator, identity work be a part of every. Formal and informal meeting we have, every grade level, every PLC meeting, every department and staff meeting. I think it's gonna be important for us to really reflect on who we are and our identities and how we show up in the space, in the curriculum and all that we do. So that identity work is happening right now, um, is a part of much of what we're doing and we hope to continue that. And I won't keep talking because as part of the structures of support, we're gonna be hearing some, from some folks here in a little bit. But our post-literacy development, uh, uh, hopefully we'll do a plug, have a plug for our new website that's launched as of a couple of hours ago. When, when, um, by our social workers and school psychologists. So a lot of good work happening. I hope you're getting a sense of that. I hope you'll take a look at the document and follow the newsletter as we'll continue to update the board and the community on the work that we're doing. And with that, uh, we'll turn it back over to you because I'm excited about this next presentation, Ms. Dangley.
Well, Dr. Brown, I'll, 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 I'll leave it to you to introduce the, the next subject and it's essentially an update on ICSD literacy and the efforts to. Uh, improve and.
Yeah.
Well, reach our goals and uh, and let's, uh, let's talk about.
Sure. Ms. Grover and your team of talented educators are here to talk about it. Go for it.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to join you tonight. And I want to begin. By expressing sincere gratitude to the teachers in our district. The aides, the TAs, as well as caregivers, students, uh, and you, the Board of Education. For your support in looking at what we're doing in literacy instruction in our district and, and what we need to do better. So the goal of tonight is to give a brief overview of some systems and structures we have in place this year. With the hope to return to you with more specifics in the, in the winter. And when, when you'll get to hear directly from teachers and students who are doing this work in the classroom. As they're focusing on building their communities and implementing some new structures. I, I'm here tonight to share out what we've seen in our literacy walks. So Tricia, if you don't mind presenting, thank you. So right now, we're, as we are embarking on the implementation. Of a high-quality first instruction phonics program called Really Great Reading across our whole district. It's one component of how we aim to support all students having access to high-quality literacy instruction. So Lynn Klinkowski and I, and I want to give thanks to her for touring buildings. The last two weeks and going into classrooms to especially kindergarten through second grade classrooms. Who are implementing Really Great Reading, this first instruction and then. The upper grade levels to see how their literacy blocks are functioning. Next slide, Tricia. So here are some things we're hearing from students. So it's with great delight that I get to go into some classrooms now. Um, and see some younger students of students I had at Carolina Elementary School. So in, in approaching one of, one student, um, I said, oh, tell me about what you're learning and why. And she said, Ms. Grover, you're distracting me. I'm trying to listen. So I appreciated her advocacy. And then she said, and I really like this because I can change the tiles. So part of high-quality first instruction and phonics is, is having. A system and, as well as teaching phonemic awareness and having students be able to interact with some manipulatives. So before you, you'll see, uh, every student has these letter kit tiles. Um, that accompany the lessons that all students are giving. Next slide, please. Another student um, said, when I asked, uh, tell me, tell me about what you're learning. He said, I like it when people ask me about my learning. And then he jumped right into, to asking me if I knew what I was looking at. And that this five-year-old could say with such pride, uh, do you see the pattern? Do you know what's, what all the red letters have in common, in common? It's because it's a vowel. And so these are our students talking about uh, this program. The next slide, Tricia. In the older grades, um, and rubrics are, are one tool that are used in reading conferences and writing conferences. Throughout our district, this particular artifact is from a third grade classroom. Where the student was explaining to me the importance of the rubric and helping them. Stop and take a look, closer look at what they've just accomplished. And so with, as we're looking at our approach to literacy. First, if we know throughout the whole district, everyone, every classroom in every elementary school, kindergarten through second grade. It is having sys- systematic exposure to phonics instruction. As well, and that is one part of their literacy experience. And we're still talking with them and engaging with them and getting to know themselves as readers and writers and self-assessment. Uh, that's important. That's that criticality piece. The next slide, Tricia. So a little bit more about this. Uh, at the base, we want everyone to have, have access to that direct instruction in reading. And then we also want to look at the other parts of Dr. Goldie Mahomet's framework. So how is criticality playing now? How is identity? How are students getting to know themselves better? How are they questioning the world around them? How are they getting smarter? And that is where the anti-marginalization case studies, the anti-racist case studies are coming in. And, and so that really great reading. Ad- adaptation that we're doing is just part of that. And within that, that gives us the flexibility to have more personalized learning experiences, whether it's a small group. Of students using Really Great Reading, which is RGR, where leveled literacy intervention, which is LLI. Or to some other models that we piloted in our summer programming. With individualized personalized sessions. That take place virtually after school or maybe during school for half an hour in the summer. We had educators using these materials during the summer to support students who weren't attending project innovation. And those three components, and that, that multifaceted approaches is important when we're looking at our literacy framework. Next slide, Tricia. So I, I want to share that um. I'm really grateful for the embedded support in schools through educators of inclusion. Beth Snyder's on tonight, who's been assigning the online asynchronous learning modules. For Really Great Reading, Jennifer Gondak and Beth Snyder. Were two thought partners as well as Lynn Klinkowski as we were looking at. The summer and fall professional development offerings. And their participation was specifically uh, sharing what caregivers, what is surfacing in CSE meetings. What are we hearing from students? What are some common themes? And then, you know, asking students and acquiring some of their feedback. And categorizing it through the student-led CSE meetings and the student-led conferences. Another piece is. A pilot program with the summer that we did, which was multi-age, where we asked, uh, invited and they accepted thankfully. Uh, some high school students to serve as partners and project innovation and offer. Additional support in the kindergarten, first grade classrooms, uh, and second grade classrooms there. Um, and I want to give a huge shout out to Brooke Burnett who helped support that program along with Beth Snyder and the Village of Ithaca for being a community partner there. Next slide, please. So this, this, sorry, Dr. Brown, this is small. I know there's a lot of words on this slide, but. My hope tonight is to just give an overview and then get your feedback. The feedback that we're receiving from caregivers and students and, and you, your questions, we rely on it to make us better. And what we learned is we really needed to implement universally kindergarten through second grade. A program in our schools. And we needed to make sure in doing that, that we didn't approach it with an either or thinking that bumped our anti-racist curriculum writing. And then how do we know it's working? So what kind of assessments are we using? We have the state assessments. What local assessments are we also going to be looking at? What are the literacy walks going to be telling us? What are, how are we going to capture student voice, that, that component of. ICSD learning forward, where we're, want to engage with students as our partners. And then, very, very last um, column is talking about literacy leadership across our district and all of our buildings. Now, just very short-term, when people ask and say what they need, we get it to them. And then how it's being used and what they're learning about those materials so that we can do better. Is an important component. So I'm going to pause there and invite your questions, comments, feedback.
Waiting for board members to jump in, but uh, Mary, you, uh, I know you have staff with you tonight, correct, correct? Um, I believe, um, it'd be great to hear from them and what their impressions or what their, anything they'd like to share as the board. As we probably move back to the, uh, the gallery view so we can kind of see, uh, see who's there.
Absolutely.
Don't everyone talk at once?
Okay.
But um, well, I'll, um, I'll go back, um.
Mary, would you mind sharing that last screen? Thank you.
Well, I'll go back to, uh, I will channel Judy Maxwell, uh, years ago, uh, passport member, longtime teacher in the district and uh. It's no secret, we have a hundred percent graduation rate is our goal. Uh, but uh, you know, as Judy often said that. We have not, at this point, have not figured out how to uh, get all students to uh, grade level, reading at grade level by third grade. And certainly that is, that is a huge challenge and that is uh, much what we're addressing tonight again is. Efforts to get there. And so really just, uh, you know, how are. How are we getting there and how is this different than we did, what we did before, are doing, or just to give us a little more flavor, that would be great.
I just want to say as uh, somebody who was deeply involved in work on literacy. Um, and working on literacy across uh, grade levels when I was teaching uh, in Ithaca that. This really impresses me. Um, the whole, uh, the thoughtfulness and the um, the detailed. Approach and systems that you have uh, put um, into words and are putting into practice. Um, really, really is um, quite amazing to me. And uh, I think one of the things that's really, really great is the way that. We've provided uh, for funding for our educators for inclusion. Um, to be part of a team that's leading this work, so um, I'm just very impressed.
I guess.
Um, I guess the only thing, go ahead, Nicole.
I was just gonna piggyback off of Rob's question and ask uh, Mary if she would be able to speak to the differences between this reading platform and platforms used previously.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think one of the biggest differences is that all teachers are using the same platform. That it accompany, it has manipulatives and that it's uh, intended, the pacing of it. Is intended to engage all students for fifteen minutes a day. So that it's not some of the other uh, programs that we've piloted in the past have required children are segregated and sorted. In ways that uh, with a limited amount of time in the day. They don't have access to other components of the literacy block. Such as conferencing, independent reading. And that for me is the biggest difference. Um, I would also welcome, you know, Jennifer Gondak who's on and Beth Snyder, if you have additional components. That strike you from Really Great Reading and make it different than Words Their Way or some of the other programs we've used.
Yeah, I would just add in, Mary, I think um, at least when we're talking specifically about the Really Great Reading, direct explicit phonics instruction. Um, and that uh. It, other programs might use more of like an analytic approach, but this is really, uh, there's a scope and sequence and so the skills build upon each other. But then another piece of that is also, as Mary said, all students in K two are getting access to that tier-one instruction. And uh, but we're also providing interventions. So students might have the class. Uh, the tier-one class instruction phonics, but then need to work on other skills. Um, maybe they have some gaps in the skill map, the sound letter knowledge that uh, they have. So they get some targeted instruction with that as well. And it's built so that it can be done in the classroom. And the students don't necessarily have to leave the class to go get something different. Um, it, it can be moved into uh, centers or stations teaching, which is, is embedded in, in what their literacy block, that literacy block design might look like.
Beth or Lynn, are you gonna add anything before I ask my question?
Beth or Lynn, are you going to add anything before I ask my question?
No, go right ahead, Sean.
That is great. One of the comments that we hear pretty regularly about our literacy program. And as a board member for the past 14 years. As a person who's had brothers graduate from Ithaca. Our own child graduated from Ithaca, our current granddaughter in the Ithaca City School District. Is that we constantly change literacy programs. Right? That there's. We stay with something for a couple of years and then we're onto something new. And so what I hear from teachers is a lack of professional development. Or a lack of ability to be comfortable with what's expected. Either what are we doing now or what are we going to do to make sure that our teachers are supported in. Making this program or any program work for that matter.
So I'll, I'll start with. The structure that we have in place for teams. To get support in their building from the educator for inclusion and their administrator. And also that this implementation has a commitment to five years of ongoing professional development. And that professional development is open and we've invited aides, teaching assistants and educators. We have a group, for example, of speech teachers. Who are also adopting this program and taking the trainings because. Of the connection it has with their roles in working with students and some of the speech goals. That it's really important we sustain that PD. And. Due to COVID, this particular program pivoted to asynchronous online modules. And the flexibility that that's providing educators and accessing them has been important. So that's, you know, the start, my first thinking on. The professional development and commitment to this over a sustained period of time. Lynn, Beth and Jen.
Yeah, to add to that little too, as you can see on this slide, thinking about how. How we're going to really know if this is working. I think you can see in like the short midterm. Outcomes that are, these are just a sampling of outcomes, but a real focus on. Educators, both in their skill, knowledge and confidence and implementation of the program and the strategies we're asking them to use. And doing intentional data collection through non-evaluative walkthroughs through. You know, teacher self-reports about what, what they are doing, where barriers are to implementation. What's working, what's not, is really going to help us better support educators. In sustaining energy and implementation of this and making sure that we, they have what they need to feel confident and what they're being asked to do for students.
I was just going to ask. How soon will it be before the curriculum committee can get on the road? Either virtually or in person and see this in action, see how. Teachers are implementing this and see how kids are receiving.
Yeah. So Eldred, we have Brooke Burnett, who's going to come. Present to the curriculum committee soon or would like to, to talk about the reading buddies program or the summer. And feel free to join me at Cuba Heights or Caroline. Whatever works for you. I'd love to take you through either of those buildings. That's where I'm at. And let you see what's happening in classrooms.
Eldred just stole my question, so it sounds like a road trip is necessary. So we'll be reaching out to get that started.
That'd be wonderful. And I also want to echo. Gratitude again that Moira, what you said about this being a team approach. And that the feedback that caregivers have given us in the collaboration. With Septa and parents who are reaching out to their educators of inclusion saying. We need more for our students. Again, that this is, this is a heavy lift and it's going to require. All of us and I'm really grateful for their feedback. We're at this place right now. Thanks to that.
Thanks, Mary. Pat, had others, any questions or? Anything you want to share?
I'm good, Rob. Thanks. I thank you for that great presentation.
Okay, thank you all. Well, there you go. Now I can see everyone. But thanks, Mary. Thanks. Thanks, Beth and Jennifer. I. Well, we're all blessed in many ways. I was blessed. My mother loved to read and. My son likes to read and I can't imagine a world without, without a book that I can, in my hand. And computers are nice, but there's nothing like a book and. And the ability to enjoy that book and the ability to read and understand. At an early age, huge, it's a huge task, but you know, it sounds like. We're taking, we're taking great steps and when we do do that, that road trip. It's not just for the curriculum committee. I would encourage any and all board members to, to be a part of that. And so we'll look for, for updates on that. Appreciate the great work and I know that great work. Goes on tomorrow because it's just Tuesday. So you know, we appreciate the work that you all do every day and. And we'll let you go and but we're going to continue. And appreciate it. And we are going to hop onto the next item and for. For LCS and while the students, the high school already knows that questions that they. They brought up at our last board meeting, I think, about recruitment, retention and frankly, who do we hire and how can we hire and? What does our workforce look like? That's a bit of a longer answer. And so recruitment and retention update is next. And so. So. So students that are a part of the board, when you ask questions, the best way to get an. Item on the agenda is ask, ask questions that we need to go and get answers for. And so, so let's go into that and. And I'm not sure who's going to lead that off, but, but let's get to it.
Thanks Rob. I'm just going to do a quick introduction because really. The person who leads this is the person who's going to present it and that's Gladeira Velazquez, who's done. Remarkable work and thank you to the Board of Education, this board for funding the position, prior boards for creating it and funding it. It is. An essential component of recruitment and retention and Gladeira has done. You know, the best work I've seen in this position. So thank you, Gladeira. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Bob. And thank you, everyone, for the, the support and trust to carry on this work. I am very excited today to be here and provide you all with. An update on recruitment and retention. Thank you, Tricia. All right. So recruitment and retention update. And Tricia, you can go on to the. To the next slide. And so here you'll see some photos of our new educator orientation. So the new educator orientation, we had two days, which was August 31st and September 1st. We were able to collaborate with Discover Cuyahoga Lake, formerly known as Cuyahoga Lake Floating Classroom. And so they provide hands-on learning opportunities. In the interest of sustaining the Finger Lakes waterways, they offer the floating classroom, which some of our class. Some of our teachers have participated in, so doing science on the lake for grades five and eight and chat in the classroom programs. So we wanted to give our new educators a firsthand experience of Cuyahoga Lake. And an opportunity for new educators to become acquainted with the resources available to them. As well as learn how to bring their students on the floating classrooms. As you can see in the photos. Our new educators also got to be students for the afternoon on. The, on the boat. And so they had a great time conducting and I also learned while watching them. How to use a secu disc to, to. Conduct water clarity analysis and also collect plankton samples. You'll see in the middle there, there's. One of our new educators is collecting a plankton sample and they were able to look at that under the microscope. So this is just an example of really connecting our new educators. To the resources. Ithaca is really a gem when it comes to that. So I thought it was, it would be great to start with that, with those images. And Tricia, you can go to the next slide. Uh, so here. There are, so as of today, we have hired 13 educators who identify as. Black or African-American, Asian, Hispanic or Latino, and there are two or more races. And also, you know. Can be referred to as BIPOC, but so 13, we have hired 49 educators who identify as white. And so 20, 21% of our educators that we have hired. This year are educators of color. Thank you, Tricia. And so here, these are recruitment fairs that, sorry, that I attended last year. And as we all know, last year was. A weird year and definitely not ideal to have in-person connections. But I was able to connect. And recruit some of our new educators from these recruitment fairs. Many of them were virtual. And the Tioga County Job Fair was, was in person. So that's just to give you an idea of some of the recruitment fairs there. And then also I, and Tricia, you can go on to the next slide. This right now, which is in development. So this is part of the recruitment schedule. For this year, one of our first events. Will be December 2nd. So we'll actually be holding an event here in Cope. Our hopes for that event is to connect with either December graduates. Some, you know, mid-year graduates. Talk to them about the district and hopefully identify with educators of color. And then I have some, some other job fairs. I am aiming to go a little bit outside of New York. There has been some challenges that come with recruiting out of state. Applicants and that has to do with the New York State certification. So that's something that I have. In part of my recruitment and retention role, also provided information. For candidates who are seeking to get New York State. Certification. And so there, there are sometimes. A lot of hoops that need to be, that need to, that a candidate may have to jump. If let's say they attended a teacher prep program outside of New York. And Tricia, you can go to the next slide. So here I just, just briefly talking about New York State certification. And again, contrary to. What many of our candidates may think who have been teaching outside of New York, they may hear reciprocity and think that it's an automatic. And actually with, with the process of reciprocity in New York State. They still have to apply, take exams. There. They, they go through an individual evaluation. So depending on whether or not. Their program is comparable to the New York State teacher program. So we may have highly qualified teachers from other states, but when they're comparing transcript to transcript. They may be telling a very high, highly qualified teacher, no, you got to go back to school. And so those are. Some of the roadblocks that, that we've come to face. And. Yeah. And so, you know, trying to, trying to really build some collaboration with New York State. In this bureaucracy. So I want to. Really give acknowledgement to, Dr. Brown mentioned earlier, you know, a mind shift, mind shift. And I feel like. Part of that is really shifting our hiring process. How are we screening candidates? And, and what's, what's that focus when we do this? And so one of the key things is really to. Center student voices in our hiring process. And I have two short clips of a video that I show during the hiring process workshop. That I give once or twice a month. So we could listen to those clips.
I like a teacher that's funny. What? I like a teacher that's generous. I like a teacher to. Play kitty.
Who plays kitty?
Yeah.
Thank you, Tricia. And yes.
It's real like a picture of a wide variety of different, I guess, teaching styles and experiences. Each teacher will have their own background, their own ideals, their own belief, beliefs, singles or staff members. They have their experience to give to students. They have their own lessons to give to them and they can kind of teach us and give them a lot of great experiences alone here.
Actually did an exercise in my government class recently where we. Named all the teachers, like we didn't even just go through like a list of staff. We just named the teachers who weren't white. I say this the nicest way possible. There was like two African-American teachers, like maybe three others. I don't remember exactly. It was a while back, but like. There was like five or seven maybe total. And this was just the teachers. This wasn't the whole staff. But it was really few and that isn't the same, certainly not the same as the demographic of the actual students at the high school. So while I love most of the teachers I've ever had. I've been here, this is my senior year and I've had one teacher who wasn't. Was. And. I do think that is kind of an issue. I think it definitely affects students when they aren't represented by people. They're supposed to look up to and who are their role models. I know if I had all male teachers for a whole day. It just wouldn't feel right. I think it would make me uncomfortable. A lot of times I've been in a class where I was the only one of my race. And that happened to me at least once in all of high school. I'm a senior in high school now. And. Seeing a teacher or any staff member of my race, like at any time, I could be passing by the hallway and I could see someone, it just. Makes me feel that I belong. And. Sometimes it's not really.
Thank you, Tricia. So those are just some, some of the voices. Of our, our students and, and really that's what should be at the forefront. And. So when I hold the hiring process workshops. Really just reiterating and putting that at the, in focus that the work that we do. Who we're, we are looking to hire is for our students and for what our students need. That the work that we do, um who we're, we are looking to hire is for our students and for what our students need. So it's fine.
Questions for Bob and or for Drew? Great job. And uh go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, and I had I had a couple more things on the slide, sorry. Oh, thank you, Tricia. If you go to the next, next slide. Thank you. All right, so um yeah, so as I was mentioning, um hiring committees. Um so I encourage people to serve on our hiring committees. And um the way to do that is to attend the hiring process workshop. Uh as I mentioned, I hold those either once or twice a month. Um the upcoming workshops are November tenth, November twenty-fourth. Um if you're an ICSD employee and you haven't um attended a workshop, but would like to sit in. Um on the screening committee of the stakeholder and the screening committee or interview committee, you can go on. Frontline Professional Growth, formerly known as My Learning Plan. Um and then if you're a non-ICSD employee, you can send me an email and say you're interested in attending. And then I will send you, I've been holding them virtual. Um everyone has been okay with that so far. Um but if anyone wants, you know, to meet in person, I am um happy to do that as well. Uh and then next, yeah, so um I also wanted to talk about the retention efforts. Um so um we, you know, part of making sure that we can retain um educators. Of color is to also um build community. And um part of that, I've um had the great opportunity. Uh to collaborate with Cornell this year um on their planning committee for First Fridays. And have um our educators attend that. And that's a great networking opportunity for professionals of color in the area. Um and then also, um I've held staff of color book discussion series. So last year, we read Cast, Four Hundred Souls, Heads of the Color People. And so those discussions um were um not only um supportive, but. Um uh we could reflect and really dissect a lot of things. Um so that's uh, yeah, just to give you some um retention efforts. And then on the next slide. Uh this is also an event that we had um as part of the affinity group. Um and so we were able to hold a panel, um Dr. Sean Everly Bradwell, Dr. Brown. Um Ben Ortiz uh from the Cornell Hip Hop Collection. Um so we held a panel and invited educators of color uh around New York State. So that was a great way as well to be able to talk to other educators. Uh and also bring awareness to the work that we're doing in Ithaca City School District. Uh and as you saw on my recruitment schedule, so as I mentioned. Uh we will have an event December second at Cope. Uh we're sending out invitations to all of the uh New York schools and also. Hopefully get some people from New York City. Um educators to come and have an opportunity to meet with Dr. Brown, also meet with me, ask any questions. Uh and be able to recruit people early. Questions, comments? Thank you.
Even better enough that you were able to finish.
Thank you.
So uh no, outstanding. And Andrew did have his hand up first, I believe. And uh outstanding, thank, great work.
Thank you.
Um yeah, thank you. Uh really, I mean, really cool. I didn't know that the district was doing this, so this is really good to hear that it's a big, you know, priority. Um I was also wondering, I, this might not be the 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 right place to ask this, but I was wondering, are you taking the same kind of. Steps to hire bus drivers or, you know, other other staff like that? Because I know um personally, the district is, I know the district is out of bus drivers in the way that I know this. Because I have not been on time to my first period class once this entire year. Um so I would, you know, I I would say, are we, you know, are we taking the same kind of. The same kind of drive to hire, you know, people that aren't just, you know, aren't aren't educators exclusively, you know? Because it's not just teachers that this district runs on, you know, it's bus drivers, janitors. Uh lunchroom staff, you know, all kinds of people. So I would say, are we, are we doing that?
Yes, that's a, that's a great question. And yes, we are. Um so recently, I actually attended a job fair with the Director of Transportation. Um and so we are doing all all we can to hire bus drivers. Um there are some some challenges that we've um come up against. Um and um uh but we are recruiting. I've also been um have put different radio ads out. I recently um recorded one in Spanish um in hopes of also um. Uh being able to to reach Spanish speakers. Um and we're looking, we're looking at different avenues of of recruiting um and connecting with community members. Um uh we recently, for instance, one of the barriers is um having a certain group. Uh go and apply on on AppleTrack, which is our application system we use. And so we just set up um a Chromebook and had people just come and apply here. And we were able to actually recruit. Um I know there were two bus drivers out of that, or bus trainees who will be training to. Um so we'll train them to get their CDL and then they'll become bus drivers. Um so yeah, so we have been putting effort as well towards that. Thank you.
Uh hey, Gladeira. Hey, Bob. Thanks for this wonderful presentation. You said something towards the end, Gladeira, that sparked my interest, that we're going out to try and meet prospective candidates early. So we can get a jump on the hiring process. In the past, there's been a technical issue with that. Bob, you, I know you recall this, and everybody who's been associated with HR. Can we present them with a contract? Is that was, was that the specific issue that was holding us back sometimes? Can we present them with a contract as we try and get out in front of the crowd and hire them earlier? Are we there yet? Thanks.
Yeah, Eldred, that is the, that was and remains a point that slows us down a little bit. Uh in comparison to our competition out there. So Ithaca has built over a long period of time, primarily to rebuild trust with the community. That this, in fact, is an important and forefront issue for us in re- in in hiring. A process that has the engagement that Gladeira went into uh during her presentation tonight. And um there is the ability for the superintendent to do what's called early contracts and offer them on the spot. But it has, I think, met with a little bit of resistance based on the history of where we were ten, twelve, fifteen years ago. Prior to this board, prior to other boards and Dr. Brown coming on board. So we have offered early contracts on the spot to folks, but we don't do it nearly as often as perhaps the competition would require us to. It's something that we'll continue to work on. But I think being out there early, having having someone on the ground. Uh Gladeira and often other folks go with her, uh that's really, really helpful to make that connection with folks. And, you know, this position that Gladeira took over just prior to COVID. Um and uh is starting to pay real dividends to have. Out of the opportunities we had to hire teachers in the past year. Oh, a twenty-one percent of those opportunities were filled with a teacher of color is remarkable. And a a great return on the investment and a real step forward.
Ithaca High School students, um thank you for asking this question. Part of the reason why we wanted to wait for a future board agenda is to make sure we could have the experts answer it. And not board members sort of pontificate of, you know, what they know or what they remember. I have the pleasure of being um involved in watching Gladeira's work. Um and her team's work as well, um because of my involvement in the Ithaca College and their hiring practices and realizing how difficult it is. And so I'm greatly appreciative of the amount of time, energy, expertise, um innovation that has been going on. And I recall, um I also appreciate our LACS reps asking about um or reminding us that our district doesn't just run on bus drivers. And so if you look at our data historically, in terms of race and ethnicity, we have always been much more diverse in terms of. Um our cafeteria workers, our custodians, our bus drivers, um then we have our school administrators or our teachers. Um but we still can always do better in multiple arenas. So great question with that being said. Um I do recall something that one of my good friends, Eldred Harris, said to me at one point in time. We were having a conversation about why we were having such difficulty hiring teachers in Ithaca. Um one is to acknowledge that we live in a transient community. And what that means is according to most census data, forty percent of people have not lived here in the past five years. Um it's the nature of being in a college town. But um Eldred was pretty explicit with someone when they said, it's really hard to have someone move to a place like Ithaca. And Eldred, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but your response was, you make it seem like I don't want good music or good food. Or nature or beauty or a good quality of life. And so the real question is, is the organization inviting me in? Because the community itself is not the issue. It's whether or not we have an organization that supports folks. I hope I captured that correctly, Eldred.
I just added, we have a pristine lake. And everybody has boats and jet skis.
So I'm saying all that as is to say, Gladeira, in your experience and your discussions with people across not just the state, right? But multiple states, especially if we're looking at reciprocity. How have folks been receptive to the possibility of coming to our community? To make this a home, to make this a place where they wanna teach and and be a part of our community?
Yeah, the um, well, the, there is a lot of resistance that that comes with, you know, um, oh, moving to Ithaca. Um and it it's something that um, yeah, I feel like, you know, a lot of, a lot of retention efforts. Um went into, okay, make making people feel like, oh, wow, this this is a great place. Um to live, because there there is that doubt that comes um when someone accepts a job or even thinking of moving here. Um yeah, it's it's, you know, one of um. Uh I sometimes have to personally go and and, you know, invite people to events and say, no, it's it's okay to come to this event. Um, you know, and and then, and then convince them of what the vibe is gonna be like. Because really, people um see it as, no, this is, you know, for first teachers, they say, okay, well, this will be my first teaching job. I'll scoop it out and then move on, you know? So so really making people feel like, wow, you know, I'm I'm um I'm making friends. Um even, you know, for me, a big thing is like the winter and getting out. And so trying to convince people, no, let's go on beautiful hikes if you dress warm and, you know. Um so the things that have worked for me to be able to enjoy this environment. Um I moved here from California and even though I grew up in the DC area. Um and in Puerto Rico, it's like, you know, um there are certain things that if we make available. Um to uh the people of color and um really make it fun and inviting. Um then there's more reason to stay, but it's a work in progress, you know? So it's uh, yeah, there there is still resistance. So, you know, things like First Fridays. Um and really, that picking up um is helping. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And uh Grace, go ahead.
Hey, Gladeira, tha- thank you, one, for uh giving the student piece. Where they're them sharing what's important to them, I think, leading with that is is so important. And it actually separates us from the other school districts. Um not saying that they're not student-focused, but I know we take a lead with that. When we start sharing our district initiatives and focuses, you have, you know, leading with love sitting behind you. Um your picture on the screen, what is the response like? Because we know we are a unique community.
Yeah, I I think that that draws people in to even listen to to me. So, you know, first, talking about um those types of things, the the initiative that we've um worked on to focus on identity. Um anti-racism. Um one of uh the new educators that I recruited. Um I think that's one thing that drew them in because they could have stayed in New York City. They could have made um i- you know, the decision to to not come to Ithaca. And so that conversation, really the conversation of like the heart and the passion. Um and centering students was where that person said, oh, you know, I wanna go check this out. I wanna be part of this.
Go ahead, Grace.
Yeah, um I have a question. Um I'm really glad that we're doing so much to recruit new educators and educators who are people of color. And I'm sure that ICSD like cultivates a great environment to teach and like, they want to teach here. But I was wondering if anything changed within like their contracts, like a higher starting pay or insurance? That would allow like greater retention or interest in like continuing to teach here?
Oh my God, I would love that. And I hope that's okay to say that, but um. Uh no, you know, it's um, it is union um uh, what's the word? Someone said, uh, you know, it's 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 contractual with the union. And so really, I will say that that the union in in terms of that um wants to be um. Uh it, you know, it's a, it's a union process. And so um, you know, that would be a great retention um tool. And I don't know if I can speak any further on that, yeah.
Yeah, maybe if I just jump in a little bit, Grace, it's a great question. In terms of the contract and what teachers are paid, what all of our unionized employees are paid, including their benefits, their retirement, their health insurance. That is all collect, what's called collectively bargained. So the union has professional representatives in Albany with, you know, CPAs, attorneys, et cetera. They also have professional representatives regionally called labor relations specialists who sit at the negotiation table with them. And this, it's again, a collective process over the years. Um I've been involved even before Dr. Brown came here. And the those negotiations had been handled somewhat contentiously and often negotiations are uh across the country. We've really tried to turn it, and I think have been successful, to turn it into a very collaborative process with our union leaderships. And trying to balance um salaries, benefits, taxpayer needs. Um that's what it's all about. So the district can't just unilaterally say, here's what we're gonna pay teachers. Um it is, it is something that's collectively negotiated. And um we're always looking for ways to be creative in a couple of our contracts. We've implemented um that the district would help pay for the cost of someone going to college for their teaching degree. And we're doing things like that. It's a great question. Thank you.
Could I, um, am I muted? Could I add something? Um that I think that uh the work that Gladeira is doing and um making real personal contact with people. Um, you know, as part of the hiring process. And where people really get a picture of what uh the the kind of innovation, the the kind of values. Um that go on in in Ithaca, it's a real draw. I um, you know, I taught for six years in another district before I was hired in in Ithaca. And it wasn't until I actually started working that, I mean, I had reasons why I wanted to work in Ithaca, because I wanted to live in Ithaca. Um and so uh the, you know, when I got here. I realized what I had been missing in my previous district in terms of the vibrant quality. the vibrant quality of the uh professional group, the innovation um that, you know, wa- was happening within the schools. Um, and I didn't know about that. And I think that, you know, anybody that we're trying to recruit, if they really get a, a picture of the kind of things that go um on in Ithaca, it's gonna be very attractive in the, in the school district and in the community. Um, it's gonna be very attractive to them.
The vibrant quality of the students more.
Yes, and the students too, yes.
Just thought I'd, uh, just thought I'd go there.
Absolutely.
Of the ex-students, and no, I won't go there. Um, anything else for Glodira? Thank you so much. Uh, but anything else before we merge another athletic team? But uh, Glodira, thanks again. Appreciate your, appreciate your work. Appreciate always seeing you. Uh, and it's great to see you tonight. Bob, we, you know, Bob, we see a lot of Glodira, you know? I think we need to change that up, Bob, a little bit, right? Uh, see, see more of Glodira. So uh, appreciate it. Thank you. And uh, we are gonna slide to um really the last uh school district business is an athletic merger. Uh, we have sports teams and other uh school districts wish they had. Um, and once again, we have another district that has a young student athlete that wishes to wrestle uh at Ithaca High School. And so that is uh next item and it is Southern Kyuga, I believe. Yep. Um, and as far as I know, it's one student and I believe um it's been approved by our athletic department. Um, wrestling is competitive. If you wanna wrestle, uh, you, you do have to uh wrestle at a certain weight and you have to uh, you know? Um, I guess he's not, not going to really come, I guess someone can uh explain to me. He will be wrestling for as a Southern Kyuga student and not competing at a weight class with our Ithaca High student, I think is correct. Is that not what I read? Asking an administrator, you know?
Yes, sir. You're absolutely correct. Thank you.
Excellent. Part of our policy of any athletic merger is that anytime we have an athletic merger, it will not replace Ithaca City School District students who are participating in athletics. And so the goal is to make sure that we support our community around us while making sure that we always support Ithaca City School District students. And um, my apologies for not remembering the actual policy number, but if you look at our policy book, you will find the athletic merger policy.
Right. So uh, so basically the student will be using our facilities, parents will transport from uh, from uh Kyug County down here uh while we're wrestling for Southern Kyuga, which uh we certainly appreciate that. Um, and he will have an opportunity to compete and opportunity to participate. Uh, and anytime we can do that in anything, clubs or obviously fine performing arts these days and athletics, uh, anything to get students uh back into the swing, back being engaged with uh, with all that school is and is all for it. Uh, if there's no real questions about it, um, the resolution is there or yes? And if we could just uh move it and uh second it and probably vote up.
I'll move eleven point three athletic merger with Southern Kyuga Wrestling.
Second.
Thank you, Morya, for that pause. And uh, and the, you know, we got it. We got the second. So uh, if there's nothing else, uh, we'll go ahead. Tricia, call the roll.
Bob Ainsley?
Yes.
Sean Eversley Bradwell? Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yeah.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Patricia Wazalun?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. And Sean did say yes. I, I saw his lips move anyway. Um, and I think I heard it. So all in favor and that passes. Uh, any other discussion items? Dr. Brown, do you have anything else uh before?
No, sir. Uh, wishing everyone a safe travel home if you're down here and uh hopefully we can be in school with everyone tomorrow. Thank you.
My, uh, my computer said the rain stopped a, a little while ago, but now it says rain to stop. So I wish the computer would get it right, Dr. Brown. Um, I might actually have to go outside and see what it's actually doing. I do have an umbrella. Um, all right. So uh, um, upcoming dates, right? I mean, next Tuesday, there will be the usual suspects as far as work sessions. And so uh, we'll check the schedule for that. I don't have it right in front of me right here. But uh, anything else, everyone? Are we good? Lilly, great to see you. And uh, Andrew Zark, great to see you. Uh, it's a pleasure and we look forward to seeing you uh next time. And uh, so thanks, everyone. Um, have a dry Wednesday and Thursday.